Good evening. The March 9, 2023 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of open meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: January 11, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11 and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Harris, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Trebowser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The Board will now retire into closed session. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
Is there a motion?
Motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sedana. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Mr. Secretary, please stay for the record any notices of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the 2022-23 school year, we opened the following bids: On February 23, we opened IFB 23-25 Student Transportation Services for General Education; March 7, 2023, IFB 23-26 Student Transportation Services General Ed; and on March 7, 2023, RFP for Food Service Management Company Cost-Transmissible Contract.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Dr. Massimino, could you please introduce our student representative this evening from John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, Kaitlyn Tikus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kaitlyn Tikus is an outstanding student, as evidenced by her many accomplishments while attending John F. Kennedy Memorial High School. Throughout her high school career, Kaitlyn has challenged herself with numerous honors and AP-level courses while continuing to be active in multiple extracurricular activities. She is an active member of the National Honor Society. Outside the classroom, she has participated in cheerleading for four straight years. Kaitlyn was selected to be the captain of the junior varsity team in her junior year and was captain of the varsity cheer team her senior year. In addition, Kaitlyn has participated in the Spring Musical for the past two years and was a student director for this year's production of The Wizard of Oz. She also actively participates in the JFK Choir Program, performing in the Treble Choir. Furthermore, Kaitlyn participates in clubs such as Heroes &amp; Cool Kids, Safety Ambassador's Club, Key Club, and Student Council. As a result, she had been elected by her peers and teachers to be the Class of 2023 Homecoming Queen. Outside of school, Kaitlyn enjoys spending her time volunteering at her church's kids' ministry. In addition, she has worked at the summer camp at the club at Woodbridge for the past two years. With a passion for mentoring, she will be attending King University in the fall of 2023 with a major in history secondary education. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Massimino, Mr. Molnar and Board members, and Dr. Perry. Thank you for this opportunity, firstly. And now I will read the news. So, school number one, first, they had an art club held by Monday during lunches for grade four and five. The students donated soup for the annual Super Bowl contest, collecting 27 cases of ramen. Our DEI Togetherness Thursday was sports day in honor of the Super Bowl. Kids' heart challenge started on February 21. Students participated in the 100th Day of School by dressing up as 100-year-old men and women. Our fifth graders graduated from the DARE program. Woodbridge High School students came to visit our fourth graders and performed science experiments. The PTO held a fundraiser at Anthony's Cold Stone Pizza. Our monthly community of caring took place in the all-purpose room regarding our selected students on all their caring acts and words. Our fifth-grade students are reading an African-American biography, working with Woodbridge High School students, and made a collage including influential African-Americans. Now, school 19, the third, fourth, and fifth-grade students are attending an after-school program that supports ELA and math skills needed for the NJSLA. The students participated in the township food drive in conjunction with the Super Bowl. Family writing for the second graders was held in February. Our PBSIS had their midyear success day for positive behavior by creating an indoor snow day for students. Our fifth-grade students graduated from DARE. The PTO snowball dance was held on February 24, and their students celebrated Black History Month by making a quilt entitled "Wall of Heroes." School 19, their student council sold cupid cards for Valentine's Day to raise money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. The students sent cards and lollipops to their classmates, and the entire school raised $616 for children with critical illnesses. Ford's Middle School, the Woodbridge High School Step Team presented the history of stepping along with a demonstration to the eighth-grade students. The students went on a field trip to the Imagine Day at the Morven Museum presented by AT&amp;T. The focus of the day was the power and beauty of mathematics, an introduction to coding with Edison Robot, and the Morven Museum exhibit, "The Mother of Invention" in New Jersey. The eighth-grade students went on a science field trip to the NJ State Museum in Trenton. The Woodbridge Public Library provided the eighth-grade classes with a presentation of various books for their upcoming ELA project. Students from their dance classes participated in a dance masterclass and performed with the Rutgers University Dance Works Touring Company. And John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, so Board of Ed member Akshar A.J. Sedana led the JFK staff and students in a traditional Indic dance lessons. We also hosted an Indic Heritage Month showcase, which included students sharing traditional garb, Bollywood music, jewelry, and even a panty-potty eating contest. We inducted 36 members into the Tri-M Music Honor Society. The FCCLA hosted our annual lip sync battle between JFK students and staff. February 16 to 17 was our Black History Month Spirit Week. We've also been highlighting black artists and businesspeople. The junior class hosted our first Sweetheart Dance. We hosted a block party racing 3,500 for Rent for Moms, an organization that helps single mothers pay with their bills. This was a collaborative effort between FCCLA and the National Honor Society. The competition cheerleaders competed and won the New Jersey State Championship for Game Day Coed Varsity. We hosted our first chess tournament against CHS, and the Kennedy players performed The Wizard of Oz on March 2, 3, and 4. Thank you.
Thank you for your detailed report. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting tonight, unless you have something else, homework or whatever. We totally understand.
Yes, I do have homework to catch up on, but thank you guys so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
And the Board would like to thank Dr. Perry for taking time out of his schedule tonight to be here. Dr. Perry is the principal at John F. Kennedy Memorial High School. Dr. Massimino, before we ask for your superintendent's reports, would you like to spend a minute to review the upcoming bond referendum?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody that on March 14, there is a half-day for elementary and middle school students, that is, to provide access to the polling locations between the hours of 2:00 and 8:00 o'clock. This is the referendum that we will look to pass, the use of the residual funds from the initial bond referendum. This is going back to the school that was originally designed to be constructed on Rawaway Avenue. This referendum is asking for the voters to consider using the remaining money onsite at Avonell School Street to do various upgrades and additions. So, again, March 14, 2:00 to 8:00, for the Avonell Street School 4 and 5 on Avonell Street, to use the remaining funds from the initial referendum. This, just so that everybody knows, does not come with any tax increase, and there is no cost to the residents. We have already borrowed the money. We would use the rest to perform those renovations and improvements onsite at Avonell Street School 4 and 5. So, just please feel free to take a look at the website if you want any more information. I know the mailer went out. That information is also available on our website. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Could you please stay for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of February 2023?
Absolutely, Mr. President. I'd like to present the following reports: Student registers and files your report, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come up to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. We'll now open it up for the agenda items.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Sports New Jersey, in regard to the finance and insurance. Item number nine, you're giving us notification that on April 25, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., and then again on April 27, 2023, you'll have regular meetings, pardon me, to discuss the final budget adoption for Ross Street School Number 11. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that and how far in advance we'll actually put out the financials so the public can be aware of them prior to the meeting?
Is that your only question, Mr. Maris?
Yes, it is. I'm just...
So, yeah, the schedule is basically what we've done in the past. We have our open public meeting to discuss the budget with the public, and then on the 27th, at our regular meeting, we'll do our final adoption. Mr. Wolferman, if you would like, I don't know how the timing, when we're going to put the budget out for the public?
Yeah, Mr. Maris, we usually do that after it's been voted upon.
I'm sorry. Say that again. I couldn't quite hear.
The budget is actually put to our website after it's been approved and voted on.
Okay. Is there a preliminary that we would know about what you're anticipating?
Mr. Maris, we would normally have the presentation on the 25th, and that's when you...
And again, the public no longer votes on the budgets, so it's just a matter of your presentation to us. Is that correct?
It is a presentation by Dr. Massimino on the board.
Anybody else on the agendas? Okay. Seeing none, superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations this evening?
Mr. President, I have 11 items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion?
A motion.
A motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
No.
Mr. Secretary, roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Mr. President, I abstain on item number 11 in the name of Rutgers. Yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Policy and planning agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Curriculum agenda, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Finance and insurance, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 12 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I just wanted to touch on item number eight. We're introducing our budget today to go off to the county superintendent for approval. This is just our adoption. It's not our approval. I did want to highlight the work done over the past 20 years by members of this community, past superintendents, fighting for Woodbridge's fair share in state aid. Six years ago, when many of us were on the Board, our annual state aid contribution was about $23.6 million. Our legislators in Trenton, along with fellow other legislators from underfunded school districts, they fought, and they were successful after upwards of 15, 20 years of fighting for increased school funding for those school districts that were underfunded according to the School Funding Reform Act of 2008. Today, I'm very pleased that we're upwards of over $100 million, about $108 million. Again, six years ago, we were at $23.6 million. That's showing some serious progress, and we're very thankful and appreciative, and that money's going right back into the classroom as well as for tax relief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Buildings and grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Buildings and grounds committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator present the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Buildings and grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Buildings and grounds committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator present the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
Just want to highlight one item, item number two here. The district is showing some smarts here. We're taking advantage of a grant opportunity. State of New Jersey put out $350 million for regular operating school districts such as Flipbridge to apply for money for, you know, critical infrastructure, and I just want to thank the administration for taking full advantage of that by applying for a grant, the State Department of Education. So, thank you, Mr. Wolferman, for your efforts.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Transportation agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following four items. Well, hang on. Seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. President, just to be aware, you will go back for the technology agenda after this.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Technology agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Cafeteria agenda, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Equity Commission agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Sedana?
I just want to commend Mr. Ali and the administration for doing a wonderful job with the Equity Commission. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Personnel agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 33 items.
Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following thirty-three items, I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mr. Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebossner?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mollmar?
On item number seven, I'll be voting no on the name Abel Ramos. I don't know the individual, I've never met them. I just always felt that these positions should be filled with in-district employees who work hard and try to work their way up. So that's why I'm voting no on that name, yes on all other items. All right. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations this evening?
No, Mr. President, thank you.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the board?
All right. Just so I could start out, new business. Tonight, I just want to announce that I will not be seeking reelection to the Board of Education in November. I've had the opportunity to serve eighteen wonderful years on this board, worked with a lot of superintendents, a lot of people. This experience really changed my life, but I will not be seeking reelection in November.
Okay, new business.
Mr. President?
Ms. Anderson?
The Woodbridge Township Free Prom Dress Giveaway will be on Wednesday, March fifteenth, from four to seven P.M. at Woodbridge High School. All students should bring their student I.D. to enter. Also, Woodbridge Township Career Fair will be held at Woodbridge High School, and this career fair is for high school seniors and juniors, and that will be on Friday, April twenty-eighth, from eight-thirty A.M. to noon, and that will be at the Woodbridge Community Center, six hundred Main Street, Woodbridge, New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Mr. President?
Ms. Bourdain?
I just want to thank Derek Voorhees and the President's Council Presidents for hosting the President's Council meeting on Monday, March sixth. There was a lot of very valuable information shared, so thank you, Derek and Jess.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Mr. President, I'll start off, I guess, on behalf of the rest of the board, and thanking you for your service. I know we'll heap more praise on during your last meeting, but, you know, thanks for giving us that heads up, and thanks for your service, Brian.
Well, you're welcome. It's been an honor.
I only have one shout-out tonight, and it was to recognize Chuck and Paglia and our Buildings and Grounds staff. I told Chuck to be in the room. Something the Buildings and Grounds Committee, myself and, you know, other members, we've been championing for some time. Typically, when May and June rolls around, we get a lot of emails, phone calls, parents who want to know, where's the air conditioning in their classrooms? Kids are distracted, you know, they're uncomfortable, and Mr. Paglia and the Buildings and Grounds Committee was pleased to report that after surveying all twenty-five schools, that one hundred percent of the classrooms are officially air-conditioned. If anyone knows otherwise, please let us know, we'll address that. That's something this district has been working towards for many years. So to you, Mr. Wolferman, for paying the bills, and to Chuck and the rest of his team for, you know, installing and maintaining those air conditioners, thank you very much. I know it's important to our faculty and staff that they too are just as comfortable as our students, and, you know, kids are only in school one hundred and eighty days a year, it's important that we get, you know, value out of all one hundred and eighty, and that they're comfortable during that experience. So kudos to us for getting that done, you know, thank you, Mr. Wolferman and the rest of your team.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any new business on this side of the table? Okay, we will now open the meeting to public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, as per Regulation eleven-hundred-D. Comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
I apologize, I need... Five-minute countdown. I don't know why I do that, it never helped me before, but I'm going to be mindful, I want to be timely, and I want to get my questions in. First question is, I'm wondering, as a body, what the opinion is of the role of parents in this post-modern education, this whole new change of direction, apparently, of education. Are they merely caregivers? Are they there to provide the basic necessities of life, and on average, to the tune of three-hundred-thousand dollars from birth to age eighteen? Are they just one of a community of trusted adults? And also, the concern, I think, these days is, is the state getting increasingly authoritarian when it comes to making decisions about the child's welfare? So, a couple meetings ago, back in January, I asked the question on the transgendered policy. Would you inform parents if the child decides one day that they're in the wrong body? And I thank you, Mr. Bush, you kind of spoke to it. You said that it's a very private and serious matter, for example, similar to a child's pregnancy, and that there's a growing body of laws to whether children's privacy trumps parental rights to know. And you also cited some stories in the news about abuse that children have taken as a result of information shared by school officials. And my first question is, or technically, my second question is, assuming most parents have no history of abuse, on what basis would a staff make that determination? Do we let the parents know or not? Is it, and I'm curious if it's on the basis of child's testimony, oh, my parents hate me, my parents don't understand me, and is that going to be an adverse reason not to inform the parents? And you did mention the gender of a child is something that's very private. My other question is, a lot of parents are concerned that it's no longer a private decision, that influencers on TikTok, Instagram, are influencing some very vulnerable young minds to thinking, all this teenage angst or pre-teen discomfort I have with my growing body, surely it must be transgender, I must be in the wrong body. And they're afraid that you're opening up a path of treatment that can be very devastating. Some people are calling it mutilation. I don't know if you know, and I don't mean to be graphic, but a trans, a girl, a girl transitioning to male, that if she wants to go further in the transition, they actually have to carve a piece of tissue and skin from the forearm to create a phallus that will never function, and will never make her a man or a boy. This is of great concern. Now, the Center for Disease Control just released a survey showing a record percentage of teenage girls, over half now experience persistent sadness or hopelessness. Nearly a third say they have seriously considered suicide. One of the bases a lot of people are saying these days is, if you don't say yes to their demands to transition, you put them at greater risk for suicide. Would you rather have a dead son or a living daughter? There's actually no evidence to suggest that there is any study, longitudinal study, that demonstrates that. In fact, on the contrary, best long-term research shows individuals who go through medical transition kill themselves at a rate nineteen times greater than the general population. Compare that with thirteen times for those who are being trans-identified. In other words, transitioning increases the suicide risk greater than it was before they were allowed to transition. And I think my final question, if there was a growing body of evidence that you've been misinformed, that the basis for which you set your policy is no longer on solid science but on political pressure, groups like Advocates for Youth, groups like Planned Parenthood, that they put undue pressure on the policies that you're now implementing, if you found that out, would you at least consider changing those policies? Thank you.
Your first question is asking an opinion. There are nine different people up on this dais, and probably everybody will have their own opinion. I like to think the role of the parent raising three kids, it was me and my wife, our children talked to us, sit down at dinner every night and talk, you know, so I would like to think that's the role of the parent, that you still have the opportunity to talk to your children, and they can come to you with any issue and be able to talk. Other than that, Mr. Bush, if you want to answer the question about, you know, the history of, there's no history of abuse and...
I mean, I'm not going to get into, I don't have, like, legal treatises in front of me to discuss this incredibly complicated issue that we could have entire conferences about, presumably, in, you know, major cities across the United States, except to say that, you know, there is a constitutional right to privacy, not specifically with respect necessarily to what you're talking about, but that the body of law that is being discussed would theoretically fall under that. I think the board is just trying to follow the law, we're not caving to political pressures. No school district that I know of is going to adopt a policy just to cave to political pressures. You know, there's, there's, there's school districts across the state generally follow one to three different policy services, and so we generally are in lockstep with the policy services as they come up with guidance, depending on what's going on. The policy that was suggested, I believe, I don't want to put words in your mouth because I don't remember exactly what you said at the last meeting, but I have a vague recollection, would suggest perhaps that the board would adopt a policy that may, I say "may" because it's a developing body of law, like you quoted me accurately on that, that may potentially put the board in legal risk, not political risk. And I want, you know, I just want you to be very clear about that. This board isn't guided on its policy by politics, this board is guided by what they're required to do by law, and you never want to go too far or have too little on the books to account for rapidly changing bodies of law, whether it be some of the areas that you're describing or anything else in, you know, that's on our plate these days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Santangelo from Reddington Township. I'd also like to discuss the gender identity policy. This policy is not based on a mandate or a law, but merely guidelines. This policy supports gaining access to and isolating minors away from their parents and portraying parents as not safe. The school physically and emotionally separates a minor from their parents regarding life-altering decisions and requires no medical or psychological diagnoses. Your policy lets a minor decide, along with a counselor, to determine if the parent should be involved. It allows staff to gain the trust of these minors by affirming something they are not qualified to do, know absolutely nothing about, and have no credentials to do so. They meet in secret, without the parent's consent or knowledge, to discuss sexual attitudes and behaviors. They affirm minors without providing informed consent regarding the consequences to these decisions. Rather, they are putting them on a future track to puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, lifelong side effects, and ultimately, gender-affirming surgery, all while ignoring the biological facts that nothing can change your gender, not even surgery. Most damaging is the school's district doesn't discuss what could actually happen after affirming a minor. In one lawsuit, a father found out his affirmed child attempted to commit suicide by attempting to hang herself twice in the school bathroom. The father wasn't even given a chance to help his own child. Another parent found out about her affirmed child after discovering drawings depicting suicide. The school stated they didn't want to tell the parents because they were Catholic and they wouldn't understand. How is this keeping children safe? We are starting to see the outrage. We have over ten states now that have passed legislature banning gender-affirming practices. A whistleblower from the St. Louis Gender Clinic, who is trans herself and only was there to help other trans kids, lifted the lid off the unethical practices there. The clinic took medical liberties with prescribing meds without parental consent, not disclosing all side effects, and skipping initial intake evaluations. Their website states, "Long-term effects, almost not known." However, we do know of some of these long-term effects, thanks to Chloe Cole, one of the thousands of detransitioners. Chloe started to transition as early as thirteen to only find herself living with a double mastectomy, medications that left her with sexual dysfunction, physical and emotional scars, and a deepened voice. Her parents were told that they would either have a dead daughter or a trans son, those were their choices. Turns out, this could be, this could not be further from the truth. An affidavit by an expert gender psychologist, a psychiatrist, excuse me, and medical doctor states otherwise. In fact, Dr. Levine shows that the suicidal claim is false, and that there are no clinical trials that shows that an affirmation works but actually harms children. He states that true gender dysphoria presents in prepubescent males, and if treated with counseling, over ninety percent of those cases resolve themselves. What we are seeing now, today, is a social contagion. The two arguments the school makes are, for excluding parental consent, is one, children will commit suicide if you don't affirm them. However, I just debunked that with just two examples presented, and there are much more. And two, parents will abuse their children. However, this claim, without legal due process, is assumption of guilt. Interestingly, there are dozens of teachers and their staff that have been arrested, charged, and convicted in New Jersey alone in 2022 for sexual assault of schoolchildren. They were afforded legal due process where parents are not. This is probably why Bill thirty-five ninety-two has been introduced into the Senate this past February by Andrew Zwickler, where the bill, if passed, will give the courts mandatory authority, as well as emergency jurisdiction in cases where a child is unable to receive gender-affirming care. So a parent who denies gender-affirming care to their child will be considered a form of child abuse and grounds for removing this child and being forced by the state to receive treatment, regardless of the parent's rights, religious beliefs, and biology. So now the state is more qualified in conjunction with the school to take care of our kids than we are. And the teachers' union, by the way, is helping fund this bill. Once upon a time, the school started out teaching our kids reading, writing, and math. Then they moved into wanting to counsel our children with social, emotional learning, and now they want to parent our kids and change their gender. It's enough, and this needs to stop. I am sending each one of the board members all of this documentation. At a minimum, you cannot deny these facts exist, and at best, I strongly urge you and hope that you will take action and amend this policy to reflect this information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John, we're just going to talk about a couple different things, but again, when are we going to stop? When I grew up, when we grew up in Europe, you live the kids that's eleven, up to forty, fifty, six years old, and you're going to find out what they're boys and girls, the men or women. Why are we interfering with the natural development of children, one are more advanced than the other? And now we're talking about bullying of children, you are bullying their children. But telling me young age, they are not ready to have sex, they know how to do sex, you're telling them, you are telling something they're not interested to know yet. Well, please stop. Enough is enough. And I said before, this is not the United States, this is just New Jersey. We are blue state. If you go rest of the country, a lot of states, they're red states, they don't teach the kids what you teach them over here. The problem we're going to have with our children, the future leaders of this country, when they go to schools, when they become military, even astronauts, they're going to have different ideas, because they were taught, you tell them, the minds are open to anything. And what you take that little girl, you're skinny, she's going to believe you, I tell you, girl is fat, she's going to believe you, she do, you're a boy, you're a girl, you ugly, you... That's what we got to watch, that's what you're doing right now. You're telling those kids to do something they're not ready to know. You make them guilty because they don't want to do it. If they don't do it, they're going to feel shame or get guilty. So stop it. Teach them to learn, read the light science, why we send you to school to do it. Because I know it's not you people, you're good people, schools, the teachers are good. It's a people at Trenton, there's people up at the top that are doing this, for what? I don't see other nations do this. If you do that in certain countries, you'll be in jail. And you're playing with a lot of nationalities, religions, you've got people in this country, and I know some of them. If you offend the child, or let them do something, they're not ready for it, you better watch out. Because they defend the children. Those people live for the children. All their life is in the children, and they want them to be like they are. Grow up, respectable citizens, to have babies when they're babies, not to that be boy, to marry your girl, vice versa. It's going to happen as a nature before us. And please, again, there's a lot of people, if you look at even New Jersey, people are not counted, they think different, people at the schools think different, but why us? Because we listen to people, governor, whoever it is, because you can get more money from governor to run the schools. No, we're ruining our generation. And what's important, you go to the rest of the world, where those kids have hope, they see the rest of the world, they're going to laugh at them. And you go as Americans. I want to say something again, over here, a couple different things. I just read about over here, about a food contract with the new two-twenty-two, twenty-three budget, whatever, hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. My question would be, when you go start a two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four contract for the schools, because I don't believe it's a good idea to waste that last minute to make the decision, because I think the earlier the better, and I just woke up a month, year, two years, and things like that, I should be more, not what happened last year, but that's, that would be a good idea. And most important tonight, I can't for this one reason, we know we have a next Tuesday, I believe, on fourteenth, there's an election for the school board, the new bond for the school, I'm supporting it. And I believe a lot of mistake was made before the old school was made, but again, we cannot penalize the children and the teachers because it's not their fault, a lot of mistakes were made. But Dr. Massimino, when you say something, the bond's going to be for remaining, the remaining money of the thirty-five million dollar bond, that's not clear to me, what remaining money do we have left? And how much is the new development, you know, replacement of the four and five school and there is going to cost? So it's going to be same money, more money, less money? You don't have a budget here, do you? That's the only thing I want to ask.
Okay. About the food contract, Mr. Wolferman, do you want to handle that?
Sure. Mr. Patak. The food service contract is for the current year, and it will last to the end of the year. We are able to renew with this vendor for four additional years after that. Had we wanted to go out for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, they actually just put out those options now, we're actually working on last year. So that would be something we could decide as a board if that was the case. However, we do have the ability to renew this for four additional years.
Thank you.
And Dr. Massimino?
Yeah, Mr. Patak, I can get you the exact amount. Mr. Wolfman, I don't know if you have the exact amount, and I don't want to misspeak and be off by a couple dollars, so if you'd like, I can get that information to you. It's simply just the residual of the original amount borrowed for the school when we anticipated it being built on Broadway Avenue, and now that it's not, we're looking to just upgrade and make the old four and five as nice and as big as possible.
Last part of question I ask would be...
Mr. Patak, I just want to stop you there with our rules, your time's up, so you asked your questions.
It's your last year, so don't worry about it. I'm sorry, that's it.
No, no, no.
That's all right, thank you.
Got to be fair to everybody. Do you want to... Okay. Mr. Mollmar? Yeah, Mr. Harris?
Well, Mr. Harris is coming up here, I wanted to just touch on the school four and five. One, as Dr. Massimino just alluded to, no additional money. I would also just emphasize that we're also getting the full forty percent debt service aid from the state of New Jersey that's contributing to the cost of that, to that project. So we met with the architect recently, we had a great chat, he showed us a preliminary rendering. We're going to use all of the thirty-two point, I believe it's thirty-two point three is my number off the top of my head, but Dr. Massimino will get to that precise number, it's probably thirty-two point three and change. The forty percent will go towards that cost, and actually, in all likelihood, the final figure will fall under that in terms of our dollars, because again, the state is picking up forty percent of the project, and, you know, the rest of that money will simply, as Mr. Wolfman and I discussed the other day, we're simply going to pay off the debt from the debt service. So that's a good thing, the state of New Jersey is paying us the full forty percent. Sometimes we get a little less than that, so we're getting their full complement, which we're certainly appreciative of.
Mr. Harris, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Patak, if you could just give your email to Ms. Lanning before you leave, the board secretary, so that I can send you that, I'll send you that amount when I get into the office tomorrow.
Mr. Harris? Yes, hi. Good evening. Very briefly, I want to thank Paul Lund, and Lady Lisa from Reddington, area I used to live in quite a few years ago, and Mr. John, for the presentations tonight, I think they were very insightful, and I think it speaks volumes about where parental concerns are these days, what children are being taught and how they're being taught, and the harm that it can do, perhaps under the guise of wanting to make sure that a few individuals are not offended and yet harming so many other children in the course of, in doing so. And I compliment them on their efforts, and I hope they will continue. And again, we've got to point out, all politics is local, this is where we get a chance to come and talk to you and hope you will push back on the mandates that may come from a governor and/or the legislative body that may seem to interfere with parental rights and, in fact, harm children. But enough said on that. Going back to the referendum, I've made it very clear that I support this, and I'm hoping that it will be very successful. I would say I know about the thirty-two point three million or thereabouts. I'd like to know what your actually anticipated costs are for the actual construction and reconstruction of the schools. I think that's significant. Also, on the debt service, that is the debt service, and you might want to explain that a little bit further, they're not actually picking forty percent of the cost up, it's going to be the debt service that goes for that. And I think it's important for the public to know before we vote what it is all in as far as, we've got thirty-two point three million that we can carry over, but what are we really looking for? And again, I pointed out, it is always riskier going in and doing a refurbishment on an older building because you're not quite sure what you're going to get into it until you do get into it, and I hope you are planning a good contingency for that. On the cafeteria service, I'm sorry I couldn't quite hear, but I think Mr. Wolfman explained that it is progressing. I don't know where it stands right now or what the anticipated time is that you will you will select a new cafeteria service. Can you please elaborate a little bit more on that? For Dr. Massimino, I think we just received, correct me if I'm wrong, nineteen million dollars in unexpected, but very gratefully, additional state aid. Can you tell us how that money is going to be spent? Specifically, what areas will you earmark to use that nineteen million dollars? And do you have any restrictions on how you can spend that? And fourth and final, I'm not going to get into this too much, because I understand it's still in negotiations, but I know that we are looking in concert with the township of perhaps acquiring some new properties to build a school that is needed for our children with special needs. And I hope that does go through, I will fully support it, once I have a little bit more facts on it, but right now, in principle, I certainly do. But I'd like to know, if you can, at least ballpark figure, what is it costing us on an annual basis to take our children outside of the district, transportation and educational-wise, for those special needs children? Those are my questions, thank you.
All righty, we'll start with the cafeteria question first. Mr. Wolfman, would you like to explain that again?
Mr. Harris, we have, the board has confirmed that Pomtonian, who was the previous food service vendor, will continue to be the food service vendor the remainder of the year. This was simply a different kind of contract that they will be adhering to, and that will take us through the end of the current school year, at which point we have four additional years where we can renew with Pomtonian, so that we can have that continuity.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, I think Mr. Harris asked the question about the nineteen million in additional state aid.
Yeah, Mr. Harris, we just got the information that that was the case, so there, there's a lot of discussions that we have to have, is obviously an administration and a board. I will tell you that one of the main areas we're looking for is security. We're looking to beef, we're always looking to beef that up, but obviously, this, this additional money is exceptionally helpful in that area. I, I would be remiss not to mention that. Most things don't go up two percent, so that nineteen million does come in handy when you look at the transportation costs and insurance costs and things of that nature, it's just not a, I don't have to, I don't have to tell you about inflation in construction materials, I'm sure you, you know that all too well. But, but there is some discussion to have, so it would be very premature of me to say anything specific, but I, I can tell you, security has been one of the things we have been talking about throughout the course of this year. And this money obviously will give us a tremendous advantage in terms of going in certain directions. I, I do want to go back to Avonel four and five question you had asked, we're spending all of that money? The idea is we want to make the school as nice as, as possible. We understand this is a pivot from what the original plan was, but, you know, those circumstances were beyond our control, and I wasn't superintendent, we passed this referendum or COVID, and this is kind of the hand we were dealt, and I, and I think we, we did pivot to what I believe is the correct solution, and I felt better talking to the Avonel Street four and five parents at the PTO meeting, and then meeting with the teachers, and understanding that they were agreeable to what we were looking to do. We'd like to make the school as, as nice as possible.
I'm sure you will.
The special need cost, they change on, I, I would say literally a monthly basis, because we have students coming in and out, when they require services that are different what, what they were previously receiving, we may change program location, which then impacts changing transportation, and those costs are...
But in aggregate, you get a price at the end of the year, so we've been doing this for a couple of years, we have a rough idea what it does cost. And I'm trying to weigh that against what it's going to cost us to, to acquire the new properties and build a new facility.
If I could...
Doc, before you go, Mr. Harris, the, because your five minutes is up, I'm not going to allow the give and take. If you still had time, I'd allow it, but...
I, I just, if I can, yeah, Mr. President, I just want to, just so we're clear, I'm not looking to buy, to purchase any property or school that's just a special needs school. That, that's, I, I just, I just want to clear that up. We're always looking to service the community and everybody within it. So if it's regular education students, special education students, students, you know, English is a second language, whomever is in that community, we're going to serve. So I, I just, I just wanted to be clear, we're never building a school that would be exclusive, you know, exclusive for one group or another. We're, we're looking to serve the community, and I agree with you.
Excellent.
It would be wonderful to have something on that side of town to, to service that community.
Well, any of it, if I can be of any assistance, I'll be glad to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Massimino, members of the board, my name is Claudia Pastor, and I live in Colonia. This is the very first time I attend to, to one of these meetings. I feel very nervous, but I believe that I need to talk, because I'm a mother. And I believe that I have this right to say it. I can't believe this is the number one country in the world, the United States of America, and our kids doesn't have the preparation, or the curriculum, or the knowledge as kids in third world countries. I finished school in Peru, I'm originally from Peru, my husband too, and we finished our, our school years are only eleven years. Six for prime elementary and high school, there's five years in high school. And we finish knowing algorithms on a regular basis. This is not one of the math or specials, you know, like students who have more, I don't know, more things, or more capacity to learn more. I don't know how to say this, I'm sorry, my first language is Spanish. And I can't believe how kids in the United States, or at least in Woodbridge, can finish a school with one more year and with less knowledge. I truly believe, because I've seen it, how we can have, you know, if you see, you know, the, well, it's good to hear about the, the budget that is coming to renew our schools. I've seen some other towns who pay a way less taxes than us with better schools infrastructures. I went to have my basin, my COVID basin, to Elizabeth High School. That high school was built in the, in the eighties. Have you seen the pool they have? Have you seen the, the gym they have? Have you seen us? Please, please, give our kids the right to grow, the right to know, feed them with knowledge. We learn, not only in Peru, but also here, and I know this, because my older son, he's under autism spectrum, on the very mild, on the very mild side. He goes to any regular class, now he goes to middle school, he just go to one special needs class, which is science. But when he was in middle, in, in elementary school, on the IEP meeting, the case manager almost got into a fight with the teacher, because there wasn't any setting for my son to go on the regular class. How can this can hap, could happen? How? And I know, because I have friends who work on private schools, who learn everything that we learn in third world countries. How can this happen? I believe that we should lead by example. And if this is the number one country in the world, please do it. Please do it. In my, my kids attend to Lincoln School, I love the people, the teachers, everyone was so nice. But do you think they have central condition? No. Do you think they have their, their basket, their bar, their basket, how do you call the basket?
Basketball court, gym?
Yeah. La cancha de basket.
Backcourt.
Oh?
Backcourt.
Okay. You know, was it not even half of the other townships that I've seen, or other towns? And please, having mind that every child is unique, besides their own...
Mrs. Pastor, your five minutes is up, I'll give you another minute to finish up your thought.
Besides any, any gender, any gender, you know, besides their, their law, you know, their gender orientation. But we need to give them, we, we need to give them wings to fly.
Thank you.
And to be the best grownups they could be.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. [applause]
Hi.
Hi.
My first time here. Camille Menfredi. I am in the park section. If I had children in my household, they would come to Ross School. Okay, first off, I know you said you get five minutes, so I'm going to try and make this as quickly as possible, because now I have two issues. First, I would like to go on the record that I adamantly disagree with some of the speakers that went before me. And that saying that the issue of transgenderism is not a decision. That's it. That was just, I had to comment on that. And I appreciate everything that this board and this, the entire education industry here in Woodbridge does to support our youth who find themselves in that situation. All right, but that's not why I'm here. I need to tell you, first of all, Mr. President, you're the reason I'm here tonight, because I read your little write-up in the, the Little Marketplace newspaper that said you're having a meeting tonight, and I said, you know what, I'm going to go.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
It's good to know somebody reads it.
Yeah, right? All right, so I'm, I'm very nervous, I've never done this. So often, we look at what our homes are worth on Trulia, Zillow, et cetera. And I was bumbling around a couple of years ago, and I noticed that they have a school rating on various homes, and that the school ratings are sourced from something called GreatSchools.org. And I don't know if you know this or not, but the Woodbridge school system has a pretty lousy rating on GreatSchools.org. They rate each of the schools one through ten, ten being the best. Most of the schools, seven of the elementary schools, four of the middle schools, and two of the high schools are four and below. The average rating of all the schools in Woodbridge are four point seven nine. And I quote, as soon as you open up the page for Woodbridge Township Schools, School District, it says, "A larger number of schools in this district are rated," and then it's in highlights, "below average in school quality." Now, the ratings are based on four factors. Test scores, which there's pros and cons about using test scores, right?
We know that.
Right. College readiness, equity, and believe it or not, when you really zero down into the equity, we do very well in equity, which is great, okay? And student progress, meaning that they look at test scores not in a certain year, but they look at long-term progress, okay? I'm embarrassed, I am embarrassed that the Woodbridge Middle School is a three, that the Woodbridge High School is a three, and that this brand-new building that we are in is only a four. So then I started looking at like other districts, and I said, and, and this will be the close, I just Googled, what are the ten worst neighborhoods in Newark? And randomly, I picked South Broad Street. And then it went on Zillow, and I looked at a house on South Broad Street in Newark, one of the ten worst neighborhoods, and their elementary was a five. We have one high school rated a five, and I just congratulated Dr. Perry while he was here before. I said, let me shake your hand, I says, because you're obviously doing something that is really good for, for, for Woodbridge. You got one school in the district, Oak Tree Road School, that's an eight, and I congratulate them. But my guess, in a word, my question to you is, can we commit at some point, can we commit to making our goal be a five or a six? That's all. A five or a six, that, that's average. But a four is actually below average.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Menfredi.
That's it.
All right.
And I support everything you guys do, all for the referendum, I vote for yous all the time, but I was like, are you kidding?
Thank you, thank you. I know a lot of these factors go into these numbers, and, you know, I mean, I remember being on this board when this district was driven by test score, test score, test score, and that didn't work out too good for us. And then we came in with the mindset of, and my mindset was, I didn't care what the test score was, you are what you are. And we do have a very diverse population in Woodbridge. You have some students that go home to a household with mom and dad, sit at the table, they go over everything, some kids go home to an empty house. And everything that teacher does in that six, seven hours of the day, kind of goes out the window. So that's why I was never really a big believer in the test score. When I went to school, we had the California Achievement Test. You went, it was just an indicator of what you, where you were. Now with the new laws that come in, you have to be at this number. And this is where, you know, I think districts get in trouble with that. So we are a very diverse population, we do have a lot of different families and backgrounds that, that, that come into this number. We do all our reporting. You mentioned that how Newark was a five, and, you know, we were a four. I remember there was a report that came out a couple of years ago, where our phones all blew up, because the report was that Woodbridge had the most bullying incidences in the state of New Jersey. I think we were the bullying capital of the world, of, of New Jersey, at least. But the problem was, we reported everything. Other towns that were around us that hire crime rates, their districts never reported the right accurate number. So we were actually penalized by being truthful and putting the information forward. So I, I understand when people are buying, you click on that. I will say that we don't shoot to be a number five, we, we shoot to be a ten. That's what we want to be. You know, we, we just don't want to be mediocre. And, and every day, we'll keep on trying to put programs in, and pilot programs in, and athletic events, it's all about creating a well-rounded student. That's what we want to do here. That's, that's, that's how you judge a district, is your child a well-rounded student when he comes out. So, thank you for your comments, that's just my opinion on this.
Mr. President?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I just want to make a comment that for my colleagues in the Newark School District, student achievement is based on the student, not the environment, and I just want to make sure that we kind of stay away from our goal of comparing ourselves to other towns. Our goal should be that we should get the rating that we put forth, and not put down any... any other towns in our state of New Jersey. So I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues at the Newark School District heard that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Standing corrected.
Anybody else from the public?
My name is Suganda, and I live in Fords, and I'm a proud Woodbridge resident for last 20 years. Today I am here on behalf of HSS, Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh. Ms. Murray Anderson, Ms. Susan Borden, Ms. Perez, and board members, and Board Secretary, Ms. Lanigan, thanks for all the efforts with Board of Education and greetings for International Women's Day. And for each one of you present here, your families and to residents of Woodbridge, please convey our appreciation to all the wonderful women in your lives and celebrate the feminine Shakti or power within us, the feminine power within all of us. On this Women's Day, I would like to take the opportunity to quote three very important women from Indian history and the qualities they are known for. First one is Jeeza Bai, who is known for Matritva, that is, her qualities as great mother and how she believed that the character of her great son, Shivaji, would contribute to the character of the nation. Second one was Queen Ahilya Bai Holkar, who is known for Kartritva, her administrative skills, and how these qualities help the society come together. Third one, Queen Lakshmi Bai, who is known for Netratva, her leadership skills where she brought together people to fight against foreign invasions. I appreciate Woodbridge Township efforts on recognizing different women from our township as part of Women History Month. I have been following each and everyone on the Facebook page, and it's really wonderful. One of them is the chief in fire department, one of them is in Board of Library, so I think I'll cross the time if I go over each one, but I have been following them. So I really appreciate each and everyone there. I also want to wish everyone happy, happy Holi, the Festival of Colors, which is a festival of fun, festival of happiness, and which brings everyone together. I also appreciate effort of Indiana Avenue Schools, number 18's effort to encourage the students to share the pictures on how they celebrated Holi at home. So this inculcates the pride in their heritage. So thank you very much, and good evening, everyone, and namaste again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
My name is Nina Morganlander. I live in Colonia. I have one child at 21 and one child at school 22. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I feel moved and kind of compelled to speak specifically about the transgender issue, as that is one that's becoming more and more kind of dear to my heart. I'm currently a Rutgers student studying for my master's degree in social work. Previously, I worked in higher ed for years, so I know well about FERPA laws. And I find it really hard to believe that kids, I don't know how they could possibly be prescribed drugs without the parent's consent. I don't know where that come from. I haven't read the material, but I highly doubt it. And I think there's a lot of naivety, shall we say, about what's going on with children and sexuality. For example, I can't believe I'm saying this in public, but maybe a year ago now, my then 10-year-old found out from an eight-year-old friend in aftercare, some sexually explicit things, which prompted a discussion at home. And I think kids are going to hear and see things that we as parents might not be ready for them to, but it's going to happen. I really think that schools need to teach sex ed as parents often don't feel comfortable speaking to their children about it. But more and more, we're realizing, and I think the younger generation is much more open to gender fluidity, shall we say, than us older folks are. But I believe that people are going to be who they want to be and shouldn't have to suppress their feelings, their individuality, their sexual orientation, whatever that might be, what they feel inside their gender is. However, of course, surgery and whatnot can't be done without parent consent until they become an adult. But that one issue that didn't get brought up about gender is non-binary. And I'm wondering, I have a close friend who's, one of her children is non-binary, and I'm wondering what the school's policy is, because this came up in a class about using the child's chosen name versus their dead name, as we call it, and what teachers and educators' policy is on using their pronouns of choice versus the pronoun of the gender assigned to them at birth, and what Woodbridge's school's policy is. And one last comment about bullying. While I totally agree with you, perhaps we did report more, but I also think there's a lot of bullying that goes on that is unreported. And we had a neighbor friend that I found out moved due to the excessive bullying at their school, and they upped and moved out of the district because it was too much for them to handle.
No, that's a fair point. I was just using the example how when it came out, we were like number one by a large margin. That was the discrepancy, and that's why everybody was looking at Woodbridge for that. You're absolutely right, it does go on, and it's, that's the truth. Mr. Bush?
I'll just answer your question similar to the way I answered a prior resident, and that is, that we follow state law, you know, with respect to children. And if children are asking to be referred to by a different name, represents maybe, you know, a different gender, not as opposed to a nickname a friend gave them, but like, you know, a name that is, let's say, a different sex or represents their non-binary, you know, gender, they, this, we have to follow state law. And the law against discrimination in New Jersey is very specific on the fact that we are to call them by their name. And their name is what they choose to be, how they choose to be represented.
Okay. And is there any disciplinary action against staff or teachers that refuse to do it or refuse to call them by their chosen gender pronoun?
We don't comment on specific personnel matters, but I'll just say that as a means of any, you know, follow-through on state law, we ought to make sure that we work very closely with our staff to ensure that they, they carry out the requirements of state law. So in this case, I would just say that, you know, they have to do what's required by law. And in that case, a teacher will do that. And if they don't, then there are consequences. But thank God, I don't know of any situation where that's ever happened in Woodbridge.
Thank God.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I would like to come up and address the board this evening?
How are you? My name is Claudia Remit. Regarding the transgenderism and all of this, I need to...
Claudia, what part of town, what?
Colonia.
Colonia, thank you.
Yes. I believe that sexual education should be up to the parents, not the teachers. I believe that physical education and some of the things that they teach a school are right. But when it comes to transgenderism, I think your sexual life is something private. And I think that parents have to own to teach their kids that at home, maybe it's not comfortable, but if we don't teach our kids, we're giving the state literally the right to do so. Parents know what is best for their children. And I understand that we should not bully. Nobody should get bullied at school because whatever they choose to be. But I think that when it comes to sexual behavior, that's something that we should keep private. We should, we should keep it private. And we should teach our kids, and your sexuality is something that doesn't have to be proclaimed to the world, and you don't have to put a banner on top of you. I don't think that, if you guys go back on time and you see when you were 15 years old or 12 years old, you can see all the stupid things you did at your age. When you're 12 years old, you don't know what you want. When you're 15 years old, you don't know exactly what you want. And as parents, we have to grow a backbone and help our kids to define their path, not to encourage them. And teachers do not have the right to keep stuff from their parents. They do not have the right to tell the kids or to tell a kid to embrace something that probably a child is not sure of. When I was younger, I had girls hitting on me. That doesn't mean that I was a lesbian, but what about if I wasn't sure of myself, and I would have said, "Oh, maybe I'm a lesbian." No, that is not right. I'm very sorry. I respect people's sexuality. I have one daughter who happens to be a lesbian. I respect that, but she was older when she embraced the lifestyle. And I don't think our kids should be listening to that because children are very vulnerable. Not only they are vulnerable, but they, at their age, when they are younger especially, they are very impressionable. I don't think that's the school job nor the teacher's job. I think parents should be parents, and I don't think that the school teachers or any teacher or any counselor should keep away from parents' information that could make a great change in the life of a person. Thank you.
Thank you.
At one point, just for, again...
Mr. Attorney?
Again, today's been a conversation, I feel like these board meetings have become constitutional law classes about gender law. But I'll just say that, you know, the district has to follow the state law, and state law requires that sex education be part of the curriculum. And so we're required by law to follow that.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Any other comments? I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We had a spirited conversation on many topics. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.